I'd like to call to order this work session of the Boulder Valley School District for November 15th, 2022. Laura, could you call the roll? Garcia.
Here.
Get Hart.
Here.
Niznick.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you. So we have one item on the agenda for today, which is academic return on investment. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Board President Get Hart, members of the board. It's great to be here this evening to give the board and public an update on our work around academic return on investment. Board members, it's been a while since we've presented on this topic to you all, so we'll do some refresher slides and kind of get into some of the work we've done to date and some of the work that we plan to do on academic return on investment over the course of the next year. With that, I will turn it over to our Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Laura DeLa Cruz.
Is that better? Good evening, President Get Hart, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. Tonight, we are presenting information and an update to the board about the strategic plan work around academic return on investment. I believe it was January, or it was in 2020 when you last received an update. June, June of 2020.
It's like last week.
So Bill Sutter and Jonathan Dings and myself will share updated information about where we've been, where we are now, and what's next in this area. Academic return on investment is specifically named as one of our initiatives within the customized support theme of our Altogether for All Students Strategic Plan. The theme, this theme is the area in which we allocate resources to district and school teams in order to create, provide, and optimize conditions for teaching and learning. Not only will we share an overview of academic return on investment, or A R O I, and the work completed to date, but also the work ahead for this year and beyond. First, Bill will share an overview and a refresher of A R O I.
All right, thanks, Laura. So academic return on investment is intended to be a comparative analysis, to be able to look at multiple programs and have an ability to decide what is working, what is not working, how to invest more in those things that are, and perhaps dial back some dollars if something is not being as effective as intended. Program evaluation and implementation studies are key to being able to make sure that you're able to rely on the data that comes back as a program quote unquote "not working," that it's been implemented in the way that it's supposed to, and being delivered effectively. Jonathan will speak to that a little bit more later. The, it's really focused on, you know, strategic investments, those dollars that the district has, and make sure that we are spending them as effectively as we can and reducing the practice that has existed for a long time of layering more and more activities onto teachers and schools and kids, and being able to take things off the plate, so to speak, if they're not as effective as intended. So the idea of academic return on investment is different from the financial concept of return on investment. Return on investment as a financial analysis is, you know, using a baseline comparison of, you know, are you making more money than you could if you just put money in the bank? So when we're talking about academic return on investment, it's really looking at, you know, a program or initiative and making sure that what you're, that you're able to analyze which of those things are doing the most good, but also for whom, like which students are really able to access the programs. And it could be very effective for one group of students and less effective for another, and so you really want to be able to dial into that. Cost is obviously an important piece of that, and Jonathan will give a good example of that in a minute. Performance metrics, you know, being able to have some outcome that you're compared, comparing these things against each other. It's a way to review those existing programs, and I'll speak to that in a second, but also, and more importantly, I would say, a framework for considering new things as we go through the budget development process, as we do every year, but being able to make sure that we're making those investments as strategically as possible and having some plan to review them over time so that it's, that activities aren't just added to the district that are sort of put on autopilot and left to continue into the future. So we did undertake this inventory of programs, it was about 2018, so it was a little while ago now. We went through a process, RFP, to select a company to help us. This was pre-pandemic, so like a lot of things, the pandemic got in the way of really digging into some of the work. But we did have this robust list of, I think it was about 250 different programs that were in place in schools, K-12, and being able to evaluate or look at the costs associated with them, costs associated with time, so how much time were people spending doing these things? And then what that, that list is able to help us dig into it and say, okay, are these things, did they continue during the pandemic? Did they stop because of the pandemic? And have we added them back if they did stop? And so it allows us a way to review some of those things without going back and re-inventoring everything. So again, opportunity for the district to look deep into the programs and systems that are in place in the district and have been for a long time, and really be thoughtful about whether something continues or gets put back in if it was paused, shall we say, for the pandemic years. So as a budget development process, oh yeah, I'm not looking at the same slides. It's an iterative process, so the idea of, you know, applying the funds available to ideas, really having a tight list of objectives defined for that particular program or initiative, the measurements, making sure it's aligned to the strategic plan, being able to prioritize those. We always have more great ideas to put in place than we have resources available. Have that budget approval process, and then go through the implementation and analysis, and then loop back again. Do we decide to keep that thing going, or do those funds become available to go through the process again? So again, it's iterative and sort of a continuous improvement cycle. And with that, I will turn it over to Jonathan for the next piece.
So one of the tools. Thank you. One of the tools we use, I pressed the wrong button, I was so proud. One of the tools we use when we're thinking about program implementation is something called the stages of concern survey. That's, and it's, in that way, we look at how people are thinking about something new that they're working on. Are they just gathering information about it? Are they, they've heard about it, but they're worried about how it's going to impact them? Are they trying it, but is it clunky and not really well going? Is it, is it fairly routine? Are they thinking about how to do other things on top of what they've learned in the new piece? Questions like that get answered through a survey, gathering up the perceptions of folks using something new. We might also, if implementation is relatively well along, do interviews with people to ask, you know, to put some qualitative meat, if you will, on the quantitative bones of saying that you're in a beginning stage. Why, well, why are you in that? What is it about the program or the training or any other things that are causing it to not be fully implemented, or fully implemented in some places and not others? And then finally, we might do observation also in a way that recognizes that any new program that you do represents an ideal, a sort of a vision of how something might work perfectly, and you're probably not starting in the, in the place that's doing all those things, otherwise you wouldn't be having a new program. You'd be just continuing what you're doing. But it recognizes that, that there are different, there are variations on, well, what does it look like when people are moving from not doing something to doing it? So this kind of model gives us a way of thinking about how implementation is going, and as Bill pointed out, we really would like to know something is being implemented pretty much as designed before we try to attribute progress made to that particular program. On the next slide, what we see is that we, once we do know something's being implemented reasonably, we have reasonably good knowledge of this, then, then we can look at some effectiveness data. And this really is a, you know, a context for beginning to consider costs, right? So, so we want to know that programs are making a difference, and then if we know that they are making a difference, we can ask the other good questions that Bill pointed out, which were, are they making an equal difference for all students? Are they, should students with certain, say, achievement profiles or certain skills profiles get one kind of assessment versus, one kind of intervention versus the other? Questions like, like that we can do, once we know things are being implemented and we can use measures that we have relative to what's being taught in the intervention, in the intervention example, to make judgments about the kind of gains that are being made over time. So, and from data, we get to infer, right? Is it the practices that are causing this? And we prefer to do that when we're doing this across multiple sites, that we're not just putting this all on one school where things may be going really, really well, or not as well, and judging a whole program based on that? So as, by way of showing one example of this, I'll point to some, a project that we would say we've completed, right? It's, as pointed out, it's an ongoing process, right? So we, we ought to be doing this on a regular basis, but I would pick out one, one project from previous years that we would, we would say we've completed. And that is to look at how, how is reading recovery in its version in Spanish, how was that doing compared to other program, programmatic tools that we had at the, at the time? And what we saw was for this program, we had low growth overall, in that, that when we matched groups of students up and said, let's take, take the group of students who got this first grade intervention for students who are having a hard time with reading, let's match them up to a statistically similar group of first graders who didn't get this intervention, and let's look at, look at how the, how, how, how the, how the students made gains over time. And let's, let's try to do the next steps too, which are look at what did students need after the program was over, right? And for this, this kind of program, one could go potentially to seeing that, that the intervention didn't, didn't help, and that the next, next step typically would be referral to, to, to special education. We could see that a student might not need any services after that, or that they the next year might need some of the other interventions that were available, and that reading recovery was chosen over. So when we looked at all the data that we, that we, that we, that we, that we had, what we could see is this was plainly not more effective than other, than other interventions that had, had a much lower, lower cost. So this, this was, you know, and while, while it's always hard to give up an intervention we've been doing for a long time, and you'll certainly talk to folks who believe very strongly, and when you've gotten to do what this particular model was, which is a one-on-one intervention with a kid, you're going to develop some, some sense of belief in that and the way it works. But in the end, what the data showed was that this was not the best use of funds that we had, and we ended up putting those funds back towards serving more kids with other things that were comparatively more effective.
So our work for, shoot. Our work for this school year includes analyzing the effectiveness of some of the priority work that's underway right now. And this includes evaluating the impact of our virtual intervention program, our investments in addressing disproportionate discipline and arrests, and of course, Grad Plus investments. We're going to talk a little bit more about each of those, starting with our virtual intervention program, which has been affectionately named the VIP program. The VIP program is an innovative approach to providing interventions for foundational reading skills across many classrooms across many schools. It was born from input at one of our teacher roundtables, so the idea really came from our own teachers. And the focus is on students who missed foundational reading skills and development due to the schooling disruptions during the pandemic. It's taught by three BVSD teachers who are able to reach 130 students across 13 schools right now. And these teachers started the year in schools with in-person assessments for reading, phonics, and decoding skills. And that beginning of the year time really allowed the VIP teachers to assess students, but also to build relationships with students, with teachers, and to collaborate in building schedules. And then those VIP teachers sent a warm welcome to students and families, which the whole program has been really well received. These intervention groups are delivered live and are interactive and deliver targeted instruction with progress monitoring. And because these interventions are focused on intermediate students at the elementary schools who are missing foundational reading skills, the intervention being used is Really Great Reading. And a little information about Really Great Reading, it's an evidence-based approach that follows an Orton-Gillingham scope and sequence with activities that are engaging and move at a pace that's appropriate for students in grades three through 12. I just had an opportunity to observe one of the classes, and they truly are engaging. We've also made investments to address disproportionate discipline and arrest. At a systems and a school support level, we're investing in a restorative practices coordinator, Janelle King, who you all had an opportunity to meet, and she shared information with you about her comprehensive work to resource our district, our family, and staff in restorative practices. We are also investing, of course, in our school safety advocates who provide support to all of our schools, and in mental health advocates who provide trauma responsive, the trauma responsive rise training, and also support students across schools. We're calibrating our efforts around these investments with an aligned organizational focus through professional learning that comes in the form of monthly professional development, through Vortex meetings, through principal, assistant principal, and dean meetings as well. Grad Plus is an investment that we're all confident is expanding and will continue to expand opportunities for our students to have the credentials, skills, and experiences behind a diploma to ensure that they will be successful in their post-secondary life through college credit, industry certification, work-based learning, and SEAL by Literacy. Our Grad Plus investments include hiring a post-secondary success coordinator, a work-based learning coordinator, high school Grad Plus coordinators, and their roles include, but are not limited to, increasing college before graduation opportunities, expanding access to CTE and concurrent enrollment courses, and instructors, having individual student meetings so that students can be on track to earn the SEAL by Literacy, and they provide next steps to students, gaining understanding about the current work-based learning opportunities happening in schools so that students can access them, meeting with counselors to support Grad Plus, working to increase industry certification, tracking our new trusted adult survey and conversations that are the outcomes of that, and increasing participation, focusing on Hispanic, Latinx students and students eligible for free and reduced lunch. Moving forward, an integral to the A R O I work, we'll be monitoring the implementation and the impact of these initiatives that we've outlined. We're investing in the present and the future of our students in BVSD, and with, we have the goal, as Dr. Anderson has said, of providing opportunities that will lead to growth, that will lead to achievement. We'd be glad to respond to any questions that the board may have.
So first, we'll see if Lisa has any questions. Lisa?
No, thank you so much. I'm happy to listen to my colleagues' questions tonight instead.
So questions, Nicole, or Richard, go ahead.
Here.
Okay, go ahead, Nicole.
Thank you for that presentation. Couple of questions. So in the restorative justice component in the Grad Plus, there are lots of different things that are occurring within each of those topics. How specifically are you measuring the effectiveness of each of those different bullet points, of the mental health components versus the coordinators versus the, so how are we looking at those pieces as individually versus as a whole to understand what is having the biggest impact for our students or not?
So I think that, and Jonathan, Laura, Bill, correct me if I'm, if I'm misspeaking. You know, we'll, we'll take the collective impact of those investments and I think look at some, some of the big metrics that we already know that we track, right? Like looking at, you know, disproportionate discipline, looking at suspension data over time, looking at some survey data. I mean, I'm guessing that Jonathan is going to put together a series of kind of questions to answer and put together a set of data that would then give us a sense if we're trending in the right directions or not. When he does those types of evaluations, to the extent if there's anything that is, that is signaling that something is not being effective through that, I think they would lift that up, and then that would be a conversation piece. So not necessarily in a, like a full overall program evaluation isn't what I would anticipate, but it would be paying attention to the key data, the key metrics that we're already presenting and paying attention to, and understanding of the investments we've made. Which of those do we feel like is trending in the right direction? Or, you know, for example, if we had a restorative justice coordinator, and we weren't seeing any increase in restorative justice practices, I mean, that'd be a pretty clear-cut solution. But I think it'll be a little bit more complicated as we think about this really complicated issue of addressing and identifying and correcting the disproportionate discipline. I'll, I'll turn it back to the team if they want to add any other context or if that feels right.
So the only piece I would add around, something like a coordinator, that's certainly a piece of the cost, but you would be hard-pressed to draw a straight line from a coordinator down to the results of students, because the coordinator's working across the whole district. So it becomes a component of the cost, which is part of the evaluation. So in that specific example, it's part of the systemic piece of the program as opposed to a component of it, that you're looking at each piece of the, if that makes sense.
And, and I would, I would add that a couple of things, I guess. One is, looking at multiple metrics makes sense here, particularly when we can articulate the aims of the program overall to eventually impact multiple things over, over time. You know, I would like to eventually be able to draw, draw some kind of line between how many fewer students of color are getting arrested as what would appear to be a consequence of the investments that we've, that we've made in certain, certain practices and positions. That will obviously take a really long time, since the data on arrests is gathered only on an annual basis and depends on the participation in multiple jurisdictions. So I would eventually like to be able to make that kind of inference, in addition to ones about suspensions, and some questions about well-being and experience at school. And so I, I think there are multiple things for, for us to be thinking of that way. And I guess one of the other pieces is to, in looking at this, we'll, we'll decide how much time and effort we have to look at, so what exactly are some of the positions doing, right? I mean, it'll be pretty important to learn that the Grad Plus coordinator isn't someone who came into a high school and got told, man, that AP testing is a lot of work. Can you help us with that? It's kind of related, right? It's about opportunities and that. I mean, so, and it will be easier to draw inferences about the Grad Plus outcomes being impacted by that, by that person at the school who does that, and the work of the coordinator collectively across BVSD, if we have some additional evidence that, that how it's being implemented at each school seems to match the kind of things we were hoping for.
Thank you. And another question, when this work began, pre-pandemic, there was that nice chart that showed sort of the cost versus the, the return. And I was wondering, as things start to be turned back on, you mentioned that during the pandemic, a lot of programs were turned off naturally, and as we begin to turn things back on, are we, for all of the things that we, you have requests for, are we going through the similar process? Or are you looking at that original information you had about what, what the cost versus effectiveness was and, and starting there? Or how does that work for, for the district as it turns things on? I know time, it's time-intensive to do all of this, and I was just curious what you're thinking with that.
So if an individual somewhere at a school, or a collective group of schools, decides to start doing something, and there's no budget request that goes along with that, there's only the opportunity at the school level for that decision to get made of, do we want to do this, should we do this, whatever. If the decision gets made at that school level, or collective group of schools, but there's no sort of budget request process that comes along with it, it's pretty easy to turn something on that either didn't exist or used to exist, and hey, that was really great, we should start that back up again. And that's, that's not a new challenge, that is something that's existed forever. So it's not quite as systemic or systematic as somebody raising their hand and saying, I want to do this, and it makes its way all the way through the system to sort of contemplate it as something that should be restarted or started anew.
And I would say our controls around that are around our budget process, right? So as we, as, as folks are, if there was things that they wanted to do that they used to do, that comes through a formal budget request, and through our budget process, as people are requesting additional items or things, we make them answer a series of questions, right? What is it for? How many students are going to be impacted? What do you think the outcome will be? Right? And so we have a baseline on when people ask for things, what is it that they're trying to do? And I think that's a really important piece when you talk about just, just embedding the philosophy of academic return on investment into the organization, right? Like, we'll have some big things, we'll do some deep dives, and these are pretty big investments, but board members, what you'll see is, A, we've, we've created some quality controls and checks and balances within the budget process, but there's also ways that we've been funding and budgeting things that, like, like, for example, our weighted differentiated funding, right? Or even some of our Glad, Grad Plus investments, where we're asking you to make a three-year investment, and then there's, with a review period to say, do we want to keep doing this or not, as opposed to putting something in recurring funds, so it's always there, so you have to make this big decision of whether to, you know, throw up the emergency brake and stop doing something. We have built in decision points in time with the way that we've budgeted to be able to reflect on that, be accountable to those decisions, to know and understand that when we make these, these investments, then they don't have to go on forever. We have an actual clear stopping point, and then we can make a decision whether we continued or not. And I think that that change, there's been a change in budget philosophy that we've really embraced since we've gone through some of this academic return on investment work. work, that really, instead of thinking about, "We're going to buy something and buy it forever," where something horrible has to happen for us to stop spending the money, to, "Let's build some decision points into our budgeting process and our budgeting discipline so we make a decision," right? And we know going in what those outcomes need to be and need to look like. And if it's not where we want to be, maybe we invest the money, but in different ways. And I think that that's a really important piece that maybe we didn't touch on within the presentation. And Bill, I don't know if you want to add a little bit more on the budget process, but every year we go through this, and, I mean, anytime anybody asks for anything, and you could look at our cabinet members, who will tell you, yes, there's like 30 questions. I mean, there's a lot of questions that we ask folks. Because if we get to this point where we're scratching our heads on what's working and what's not working, we can go back to our budget process, we can go back to the things that we invested in that were intended to move the outcomes, and start to ask the tough questions, and start to shift and change investments.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll add to that with, those questions aren't answered on everything, right? So if it's a new law that says you have to do something, whatever that might be, we don't necessarily need to go through the effort and work around defining things that couldn't or wouldn't ever be looked at into the future. I can't think of a specific example, but, you know, testing water, you know, like, if we have to do it, we have to do it, and we have to spend the money on it, right? We don't need to do a return on investment on whether that's the right thing to do. But definitely, you know, largely focused on instructional activities for students, it is academic return on investment. And making sure that we're turning on the procedures, data collection, testing is not the right word because there's different metrics that can be used, but like, those things all have to be in place, so you're not trying to invent it after the fact. Because that's where you really can get into trouble with this process, is after the fact you sit down and say, "Okay, we want to look at these X, Y, Z programs. There's three of them, so how are we going to compare them?" And people start throwing out ideas of different ways to compare them, but that always leads to somebody raising their hand and saying, "Well, what about? What about this?" Or, "Was it implemented effectively?" Or, "Is it the right group of students?" So if you can define all that ahead of time and get some collective agreement that that's how something is going to be looked at, then you're in a much better place down the road when you have to make the decision to say, "It's, you know, clear, like, on the reading recovery, that it's not as effective and it's more expensive, and so we don't really need to spend a lot of time hashing it out."
That was helpful. So, we're doing a good job setting up safeguards and having the system in place at the district level in a variety of ways. But to your point, a school with their SRA dollars or their PTO funds, if it doesn't come to the district level budget, it might not go through a similar process as a result.
But what I would think is very appropriate question or thing to be looking about is, you know, looking at, is there a plan for their weighted differentiated funding, right? And so everybody's developed a plan, right, for what those funds should be, right? So as we think about, and this really, you know, at the executive director, assistant superintendent of schools, deputy superintendent of academics level, right, if schools aren't moving the needle in the ways we'd want them to be moving, the first question should be, well, we provided you extra resources, because everybody said they needed more resources. How have those been used, right? You know, the positions you bought, were they doing what you said they were going to do, or did you lay off some other work managerial or otherwise on them, right? Like, so, it gives us the ability to ask the questions, to begin to dive in, to make the changes that we need, if we're not seeing the progress that we would hope. And I think it's clear for the weighted differentiated funding versus the SRA and PTO, which is just run-the-school-type money, right? We gave them money beyond that to improve outcomes for kids, to close achievement and opportunity gaps, hard stop. So, as we start to progress, right, and as we start to move on, we start looking at results, I think that those are very appropriate questions we should be able to answer, and we should be accountable to, and schools should be accountable to. You know, because we made pretty significant investments, putting our dollars in schools, developing these plans to see improved achievement.
Richard?
I think you answered most of the questions that I had, in terms of asking. Thanks, Nicole, for asking those questions. I like the way you started out, Bill, when you said that academic return on investment is different than your typical return on investment. So, the question that I initially had was, if it's different, then what are... How much weight do you put in each one of those particular areas? For example, there's cost, there's other things involved, like the outcomes, et cetera. So if the outcome is meant, but the cost is higher than what we invested in, I mean, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. So, the idea is that you really need to be able to compare two things. And two things could be something against not doing something, right? That would be a comparison. And if we spent money on something and got the same outcome as where we did nothing and didn't spend money, that's probably a good indication that we should look at, was it implemented right? We don't know, okay, that kind of stuff. If you're comparing two things, that's where it's not so much that it was $5 or $10, but that the answer is four, and it's some multiplied, divide-by factor that gives you four, and the other answer is 12. And so you're getting more of 12 than you are of four, so it's a better program to invest in. Is that... So it's a comparative, it really has to be a comparative.
Right. So, as programs are being developed and implemented, the people that are involved in those particular programs know, or they should know, that this is what I'm responsible for, and this is the outcome I'm going to be responsible for getting in advance, obviously, you know, before they even start the program, because I'm the one that's responsible for making sure this happens. So therefore, I have metrics that I have to continue looking at to see if I'm on the right track or not. And if you find yourself not on the right track, but we still think it's a good concept or a good design, what do we have in place to be able to rework with those particular programs to get them on the right track, or at least to make some suggestions on that? And the reason I'm asking the question is because, when that happened, my question would have been, and I didn't ask it at that time, did the people that were doing know exactly what the outcome was going to be before the district came in and started looking at everything that was in place and decided to cut it off? So, I'm assuming that all of our program directors or program coordinators will have that information, so that when we do get to a point that, mm, it's not working, then we know why it's not working, and they know why it's not working. And if they had a chance to turn it around somehow, they could have done that.
I think that's part of the program evaluation piece.
Yeah, and I guess one of the pieces I would say here is that, in the short term, people will have some data that they can use sort of in a formative way, right? Which is, you get feedback over time that things aren't going quite the way that they ought to. But the summative, long-term stuff, they won't necessarily have until the long term. And part of this work is having put together the basic infrastructure to look at things over the long haul, right? So it's a relatively common concern with early intervention programs, that you can do something intensive with a child, and then a year or two later, the effect of that seems to have worn off, so that you then wonder, should you have done that? In the case of reading recovery and... We had the hindsight advantage of a national study that concluded the same things. So we're pretty sure on that, that one. We would say that the formative measures on the way in that didn't look bad, but the problem there is probably more with the particular model, that the idea, and I'm not the expert in this, but that the particular way in which they were being trained to teach students to imitate the reading behavior of a first grader without necessarily focusing on the core skills in the manner that would be done in other ways. So the problem may have been that folks tried their hardest and got the results that they could expect and hope for with a model that just didn't quite work the right way.
I didn't mean to rehash at all. I'm just using that as an example in terms of what we learned from that particular process and what we could avoid in current processes in terms of R O I.
I think the big shift, Emma tried to hear exactly what you're saying. The big shift comes from the adults like it versus it's working for kids, right? Like, that's the conversation, right? Like, so, because if we like doing something that's not working for kids, should we be doing it? And so, we collect enough information upfront on new investments, we're creating, you know, Jonathan digs deep on a few big topics. We create, you know, when we request money, we create these points in time where we're forced to make decisions and defend what those decisions are. I think a combination of those three things, plus the focus on our metrics, plus the focus that we have on survey results, like, we have lots of inputs that we're looking at that will allow us to make all of these decisions as we move forward in ways that are transparent, in ways that are accountable, in ways that don't overreact one way or another. You know, because, you know, to Jonathan's point and Bill's point earlier, you know, if you haven't implemented the program appropriately, you can't say whether the program's working or not, right? That's why we do evaluations on implementation, right? And Jonathan had talked about, you know, some of the models we used around, are things being implemented appropriately? So, I feel really good in regards to where we are, how we're able to make decisions. I feel really good on the philosophy and embedding it into the school district in ways I think would not have been possible prior to the work that we did in 2018. And also, it's complicated, you know, there's not a yes/no button on a lot of things that we're going to do. We're going to have to have conversations, dig deep, and make sure that we're being mindful as we turn things on, off, extend, repurpose.
You mentioned three, things that you're going to be looking at, virtual intervention programs, disproportionate discipline arrests, and then the Grad Plus investments. Those are a lot, it seems like, especially when you get to the Grad Plus investments. Is the board, or can we, or I, or individual board members suggest other programs that might fit into the A R O I process? I'm thinking of a couple already in my mind that I think we should start looking at. But is there... Are we going to have that opportunity, or we just listen to you guys?
I don't know that this presentation is intended for you all to bring a list of other things that you'd want to think about. I think that that's an appropriate thing to talk about in our prioritization meeting. And because, depending upon what the board would want to measure, right, we would have to dial up bandwidth and we'd have to take an assessment of what it would take to measure those things. And so, I mean, I couldn't make those commitments beyond and overstretched Jonathan's team, but in prioritization, which is happening in January, if there's things that you all are very interested in, right? It could be, "Rob, we want an A R O I update." Or, "We're thinking about these things that we have some questions and concerns about that could start with either an R F I, could start with a board presentation, could start with something like that that put on the radar." So I think that that would be the appropriate time to do that, not right now.
So, I just have a couple of questions. Richard, thanks for asking that, because one of my questions was, how'd you decide these three? Because the board hasn't had any input into it. So how did you pick these three to focus on?
I mean, I think that these are pretty significant recent investments, when we think about, and they're temporary investments. So, the VIP program, we said, when we brought this to the board last year, we were going to spend one-time dollars on this to see if it was effective, right? And so we presented that to you all, so we had that. Our disproportionate disciplines, I think, are our biggest challenge. We invested over $2 million. So it seems like a very big investment that we should be reflecting on, and something we talk about a lot. And then, in regards to the Grad Plus, many of the investments in Grad Plus are also time-dated. They were, it was a large, one-time investment for a course of three years to really begin to move the needle on these areas. And so, I don't know that there's an exact science, like a formula, on what we bring to and what we don't. I felt like that was the rationale behind bringing these three.
Because part of what I think of when I think of this too, is the programs, I think, that Bill kind of talked about, and I think we all know, have just been carried forward year after year after year without actually looking at it. And I think, you know, these are new, and I get that they're time-limited, but how do we look at some of those older programs to see if they're actually... And how would we decide?
I'd need some more specifics on what you're thinking about.
Well, like, didn't you say there were like some hundreds of programs that we initially looked at? And so how do you, from that, decide which ones you want to take a look at and which ones you don't want to look at? And so, I mean, I'm not faulting these three, I'm just trying to figure out. The other question I have is, when you decide if it's working, so like the VIP program, right now it's impacted 130 students. That's great, but we have 28,000 students. So, do we look at number of students? I mean, how do we decide what the metrics are? If it's targeted for those certain students, and I get that, I'm totally supportive, but at what point, if it's only impacting a few students, does that impact the R O I, or does it not? I mean, how do we look at that, too?
Well, I think what you're referring to is, if it's working, right, how do you scale, and to what extent can you scale? Or how do you think about intervention differently? Right? And that's a tricky one, right? So, virtual intervention program, we see that it works, right? Then the conversation might, could be a couple of things. Well, we'll just keep doing it for a year, right? It worked, and we're going to, you know, impact kids. We could start to ask the question, how effective would this be, and more cost-effective would this methodology be versus maybe an in-person interventionist? And do we want to try to pick some spots where we would try that out? And so I don't know that it's a... I mean, I think that we have the information that we need to begin to have these conversations, right? I don't know that there's a clear cut, if we see this, we're going to do this, right? I think it's just more complicated than that with all the factors that go into it. And so, but, what I think that by having this philosophy, this A R O I philosophy, it allows us to be able to frame and have those conversations. So, in January, if there are things that you'd all want to see, you know, some type of, you know, could we do an academic return on investment on these things, we would have to take it back to our team, and then we would say, "This is what we would need to be able to do that." But again, I don't know, it's tempting to think that you have a process that gives you all the answers all the time. I just think it's more complicated and integrated than that. So for that example, you know, fingers crossed that it works, that it continues to work. And then, if we have something we know that works, and we have other kids with needs, and we know we have a solution that works, then the challenge is, how do you make sure the kids get what they need in the most cost-effective way, so.
Just two more clarifying questions. So a teacher brings an idea to you, are they automatically... Is there automatically a sunset that you're going to review of what they're bringing to you is going to work in a year or two? Or, how does... That was kind of what I was hearing, is that there was a sunset provision so that you could kind of... of evaluate if teachers are bringing you the next great idea? No?
No, not necessarily. And teachers are bringing ideas to their principals. That's happening with SRA dollars. Like, we don't have insight on that. Weighted differentiated funding, we would have more insight on because every school developed a plan on what they were trying to accomplish and what they were spending it on. And that sunset it because the money runs out. We only committed to the money for three years, right? So to the extent that we build these points in time, when it comes to you all in the budget process, right, you'll see those as one-time, multi-year, one-time investments versus a recurring investment, right? And so it's not necessarily we're going to end, it, it gives us a decision point to decide, do we want to keep going? Do we have to reflect on it? Do we, do we spend it? Do we continue to spend that? Do we extend it for a year? Do we have the information that we need to, to make that decision? And we've set these things up, so we will. But things locally at schools, things happen all the time, small dollars, small investments. We're talking big, big investments, district-wide investments that we push through this process.
So will you be bringing us an AROI on the differentiated instruction or differentiated funding? Or is a decision already been made on that?
So we're in year two of implementation. It's something that we're going to certainly be looking at. At the end of the third year, like, we don't have any, we, we have to approve money to be budgeted to continue that. Now, I would say in our budgeting process, as we think about reserving money to make that option possible, you know, that's, that's something that we'll, we'll continue to look to do. But we haven't extended that and that would come to the board. But I don't know that it would come to the board in an AROI presentation. I think when we get to that point, it might come as more of a, maybe a budget presentation. I'm not sure. But we can, we can discuss on how you'd want to see that. So we'd make sure that we're meeting your expectations.
I just feel like the concept of this is so, to me, exciting. And I just keep wanting to stretch it, I think is my problem, right? I want to apply it to like all of the programs so that we can say, because we're going to be facing a declining budget and we're going to be having to make some hard decisions. And so the more data we can have to tell our public and our teachers and the board why we're making these decisions, the better. But it would take a huge staff to dive in to do this kind of data dive on all of the programs. And I know we can't do that. But, so I'm sorry if I get super excited about this and want to apply it to every program that we have. Because, Richard?
No, and I agree with you, Kathy, because I know that when times are tough and we cut budgets, we tend to cut some budgets that affect a few, but have a high impact for those few. And those are the budgets that we usually cut. And, and I, I hope we don't continue doing that.
That's why I asked the question about numbers of students, right? That's a tricky one. To your point, Richard, small number, high impact, probably something we'd want to look at. Low and low, we probably don't want to look at. But we don't have the data all the time on that either. So, so this is exciting, Rob. I look forward to, you know, continuing to, to get input on it, kind of how you pick the programs, how you decide what the starting point is, how you decide what the endpoint is. I think there's still, I get we're just turning it back on. So there's probably way more questions than you have answers to. So I won't make us stay here while we decide that there's way more questions than we have answers to. So, but I know when Bill first brought this to us, as you know, I got super excited about it and I'm still really excited about it. So thanks for, for bringing us up to speed. Does Lisa, any questions at the end of this?
No, Kathy, thank you.
We hope you feel better. Your voice doesn't sound so great. So feel better. Anybody else with any questions?
Yeah, I just, when will we hear about this again? When's our next touch point?
We don't have another one scheduled for this semester, but we can talk about in prioritization if we want to. We can do a couple of things, a standalone presentation. We can embed it into budget presentations. I think we have lots of opportunities. And so be thinking between now and January, when we meet, what would be the things that you're really interested about? And, and if we want to have some initial conversations on whether that's something that I feel like is feasible or what the timeframe would be to make it feasible, we can have those conversations.
Yeah, I think, Rob, it'll be really interesting to hear from staff when we can embed this into budget conversations and when it should be standalone. I think we'll have to look to you for, for some guidance on that because you'll know what the metrics are and what, how to, to bring that forward as opposed to us just trying to guess. So that'll be a good prioritization conversation. All right. Anything else for the good of the board? Well, thank you all for this. It's, as I, I think we all share the excitement of the potential of this work. So it's really exciting. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And I guess the next time we see each other will be at the Casby Conference, at least some of us, right? So thanks a lot. Meeting adjourned.